Village Council Work Session, June 24th, 2021 to order. I show the time at 9:03. I show we have a full quorum with two participants remote, which would be myself and also Mayor Pro Tem in Vanderburg. So first off, I'd like to consider a motion to allow council members to participate remotely.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes? I don't have anything, so I'll just let me know.
I've got two things. On items of discussion, the number six, Discussion of Gates and Private Roads, we're going to table that. And under Items of Discussion, the item number 12, Discussion of Forming a Youth Council, we're going to table that.
Can we table the gates and private roads for the next regular meeting? The chaplain can be there? And then the youth council for the next work session?
Yeah, we can do that.
We can do that.
Yes.
So the gate thing will be with, at the regular meeting, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Anything else?
Yes, I'd like to add item 16. Consider adoption of revised general fund budget ordinances. OR 2020-10-3. OR 2020-11-02. OR 2020-11-03. OR 2020-12-01. OR 2021-01-01. OR 2021-03-01. And OR 2021-03-03.
Okay, when we get to that point on 16, I'll have you read that because I started writing it down and...
I got it.
It's more than...
Okay.
So, all right. Anything else? All right, I need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have presentations. We don't have anything. Village Hall. Christina, are you going to take that?
Yeah, I have a lot of Village Hall stuff, but honestly hadn't had time to compile a report for you guys, so I'm going to table that into the next meeting. We still don't have permits, but we will hopefully have those by the end of the week. Other than that, they're making progress as they can.
Quick question one last.
And real quick, yeah. What is the holdup? Is it just, it is still even counting?
It is, yeah. Public works still with a sewer.
And when you said...
Okay.
When you said that...
Andy, anything you want to read?
I can't hear you.
When you said that by the end of the week, or they giving you an indication probably be by the end of the week?
No, they're not, no. The public works and our engineers been going back and forth on very, very, very minor changes. The last changes were made yesterday, and we honestly thought they were going to be approved after the last set of changes, but they're just little tiny things that keep happening. So we're getting closer and closer, and it's just very small stuff at this point.
Good. They are doing, they're still doing grading. They did the pipe extension and all that in the driveway for the DOT permitting. And they have a bunch of undercut in the parking lot to do, so they're still doing that, weather permitting, these rain showers and stuff. We've had some weather delays, but hopefully we'll get our permits before they get stopped, you know?
Well, I think we're good.
And Andy, real quick, Andy, anything update on the sign when you have availability to get that? And I can help you with it, it's just...
Joe, it's been up for over a week now.
[laughing]
It's up, yeah. I put it up like last weekend or weekend before.
You're talking about the other side, right?
Yeah, the other side. I can tell you that I've driven by a while.
Thank you, Andy. It looks nice. It looks nice.
That's the reason I am remote. I hope the town's doing okay if you guys are here.
It's up by the traffic circle where you can see it really good. You can see down behind it where they're doing the construction, so.
Thank you, thank you for doing that. Okay, so nothing else then on the Village Hall? So moving on to items of discussion, we have Discussion and Consideration of zoning text amendments required for compliance with NCGS 160D and other minor miscellaneous amendments.
So I'm going to introduce Tom Whitenower from InFocus. He's our consultant planner. He's going to present the 160D changes. These are legislative changes that are required for us to adopt. He's going to go over kind of briefly what they are, and then y'all will consider the adoption of said ordinance.
Thank you, Christina. This has been in the works at the state level for about five years, and it finally was adopted by the legislature. And it is what other local governments around the state are doing at this time is getting their amendments in place before the deadline of July 1st, 2021. Over the years leading up to this new chapter, 160D, the towns and the counties had zoning regulations and planning regulations in separate areas. They were using different terminology. They were running the authority of the planning board and elected steps, the legislative steps differently. And it was really timed and requested by the planners, probably developers and attorneys, for them to work on this. So the UNC School of Government was a big part in it and had given training planners such as myself over the year to get ready for it. And Marvin, like so many other places, was just so busy, they needed some help. So we were happy to get on the word to make these amendments. And I've been working on this on a very part-time basis for about the last month and a half or two. And I know that, I believe in your June 8th meeting, all the items were in your agenda package that you had. The only really changes from that meeting is we filled in the red lines for a few of the areas, number 10, number 23 to 29, and then we moved what was number 30 into number 18. So I don't know what level of presentation you all had for that. If you want me just to give you a quick overview, or you were already familiar with it from the previous presentation and summaries, it's up to you, it's your pleasure.
I mean, there's a lot of... And I kind of looked at it last night.
So...
Just basically text changes, right? And it's nothing that's impactful.
Is there anything significant in all of this that...
Oh, what's, what, we didn't do any sort of special ordinances that weren't part of the 160D mandates. They had some things that were may and should, but we followed all the musts. So that's why there's a checklist in there after that. It shows where we achieved all the musts, you might say, from 160D in here. So anyway, everything we did was mandated. I think what it does that's a big help is for property owners, it puts everything in black and white that used to be in the gray a little bit from the administration point of view. And planners are just as happy as the landowners with that because it makes us uncomfortable when there's a lot of room to stray perhaps. And it puts some burden on the appointed and elected officials, and even staff, that they need to take an oath of office. And I brought one today that I can read after this meeting in case I'm doing some temporary work here. But it makes everybody that touches the landowner's permitting responsible. It also raises awareness of permits and allows people to get documentation when things are denied for some reason. If it's a simple, no, your sign doesn't meet the regulation, instead of it just being a casual conversation like that, zoning administrators really need to write that down, and it can be appealed. So it really makes the process more sophisticated, and that's what I think everybody's going to like about it.
It just basically tightens everything up.
Sure does.
Okay.
Sure does.
Okay, I'm good with that.
And these changes, we haven't added anything new or different besides what the state has said that we have to do, correct?
Correct, we didn't stray at all. You know, they had quite a lot of text you could almost copy and paste into your ordinance. And it wasn't that simple. I had to look at any references to that from other places in your code and of course change local governments to Marvin and things like that. But correct, we didn't do anything other than what was required.
Okay, so for me, I mean, there doesn't seem like there's really much discussion. I mean, we have to do it. So I mean, I'm good to go ahead and, you know, make a motion to, you know, approve the zoning text amendments required for compliance for NCGS 160D, another minor miscellaneous text amendment.
Let me do add, Ms. Vanderburg, that I see that staff did ask in some miscellaneous that don't have anything to do with 160D at the back end of this. So I don't know if you want to have anything on that. Six of the eight sort of miscellaneous amendments that went to the planning board were recommended for adoption. The two that didn't aren't in your package, those might come later. But I just want to mention that when I looked at this agenda, in case it wasn't obvious, there's a couple of miscellaneous changes. One is, they're very simple. Marvin Garden, just add that to the list of the ICB, with some others listed. Two typos where it just changes the word "on" to "one" and "locate" to "located." The third amendment was, for whatever reason, I guess the online group that hosts your land development regulations used the wrong title for one section, so it was just a correction of title. And I think this was a village manager request to change the guidelines to regulations for roadway median land standards. So they're firm, it's not just kind of a wish list. And then the last one was some references about dwelling and dwellings units to match the intent of the village. And so, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Those are, those five are part of this item.
That was not a part of the statutory.
That's right.
Well, those seem fine.
And...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know this may sound like a silly question, but can you tell me the difference between the consistency statement and the inconsistency statement? They seem to be the same, except once as well about what? Help me ask for when I'm reading that.
Okay, good question, very good. Let's see, I'll tap that sheet because you'll want to read that as part of this consistency statement. So we're referring to the first, 2, 3. At the bottom of page 20...
2020 land use plan.
Yep, at the bottom of this, third page of this item. Consistency statements are, have been required from 160D. They've made it a little more clear. And we, at the bottom of page 3 for this item, there's a consistency statement in bold, so everyone sees that. Starts out saying the Village of Marvin Council finds the action to amend the village's zoning, and it goes on. But you want to know the purpose of it, or just, it sounds like...
Well, you have a consistency and then an inconsistency, and I think the purpose is exactly the same. So why, why do we have both? Or what, I'm kind of curious, what...
So we have to decide whether we're consistent or not consistent with the 2020 land use plan. They're to decide whether we are or are not consistent with the 2020 land use plan as it is written. So the statements are, one is, you have a multiple choice, Joe. Which one do you want to pick?
Really fast, really fast.
Okay, so we're going to vote.
Really, really fast. There's an ordinance in your packet that updates the, that covers these text amendments. The one in your packet was updated by Chaplin, and we have that here, and I can, we can share it on the screen. Tom has one additional change.
We've given it to Andy, so he's going to...
You got one?
I'm lost. Are we doing this now?
This is, yeah, it's...
Don't worry about the one that he just gave. You worry about the one that I gave.
Okay, I'm still confused, but, okay.
So there's a, there's been a revision in the agenda packets and the ordinance based off of the attorney's review. That's going around the table right now. There's not, there's nothing major to those changes. It's just attorney language that was added in there. In addition to that, as Tom reviewed the ordinance that's presented from the attorney, there were some additional changes that he suggests based off of some additional titles and regulations that have to be included per 160D. I've given those to Councilmember Warman. He's going to amend the ordinance that was just passed out to include additional language at the time y'all adopt it.
Let me share it with the screen.
So when you're ready to adopt the ordinance, you can just amend the presented with that language right there to add?
So this, this... Take the whole list off?
Yes.
And to answer your question, the word "not", there is a difference in the consistency and the inconsistency statement. In the inconsistency statement, the last sentence says the proposed changes will not help reach intended, where that's not in the other...
Right, okay.
...consistency statement, that's the difference.
Somebody does have to read that consistency or inconsistency statement to adopt it. Do y'all have one of those in front of you?
Yeah, it's all, it's in our...
Okay. So whenever you move to adopt that ordinance with the amendments, also make a motion to approve the inconsistency or the consistency?
Or you say with the consistency statement, and then read it.
So do we need to, well, I guess we need to decide if we're, which one we're picking first, which I think, from my standpoint, I believe that we are consistent with that. That was the whole point of the language, am I correct?
He's got it. It's titled...
Yeah, I agree with you, Andy.
Title 15?
Okay.
XR?
Do we need a motion on this?
Well, I think the motion is all included in the passing of the, we just need to have a consensus, I guess, that we all agree that we're consistent?
So we need a motion to adopt this with the one change Tom has. Adopt is amended with the consistency statement, and then you read the statement.
Okay, and then, but I, when do I read this? That's the thing that we're changing, right?
Yeah, you can, you can do that now, because Tom, go ahead and go ahead and do that.
Okay.
So the one change that Tom wants, the Thomas stating needs to be in here is...
Is an ordinance of the Village of Marvin, North Carolina, OR 2021-06. And I'm not sure what the last one is. You haven't signed it, right?
Go ahead, can you explain what the small change is?
Um, we had, the, around the state, people were using one term. They used conditional use permits and special use permits, and the state said, we want everybody to call them special use permits. So I just had to run through the whole ordinance to see where it appears. There are probably over 100 changes, whether they're acronyms or the term. And one of them is in the tree section. So I just saw that trees being in Chapter 93 is another chapter we need to put in there. And I want to verify that, so 11 or 9? Somebody have that note?
Yeah, I'll read it.
Okay.
And then somebody can start move it. So the ordinance is, inside of your agenda packets, it is ordinance 2021-6OX, as we obviously don't have it numbered yet. And the ordinance is to amend the code of ordinance to be compliant with 160D and the other miscellaneous bookkeeping amendments in the Village of Marvin. The motion needs to be, needs to include the amendment of presented ordinance to include Title 15 and 9, general regulations and Chapter 93 in the last subsection, now therefore it be ordained. That motion, that ordinance is presented on the screen for those of you there participating remotely. It already includes the language.
So moved.
Did they raise that?
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Can someone make a motion to, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mayor.
Who made the motion up?
Oh, no, that's okay. I'm trying to get that up on my screen now, so. Or I guess that's Austin's.
So can someone make a motion to relate the consistency or inconsistency with that? They can, you can approve that consistency statement.
Motion to approve the consistency statement, and then just read it.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the consistency statement, which will include the Village of Marvin Council finds the action to amend the village's zoning to be consistent with the adopted 2020 land use plan. 2020 land use plan calls to ensure future development and will add to overall quality and uniqueness of the community and builds upon the existing foundation of, existing foundation that defines that. So there's a typo. Should read "that" rather than "the."
Right.
That defines Marvin. The proposed changes will help reach intended goal of enhancing the village's development ordinances, therefore being reasonable and in the public interest.
Further discussion? All, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, little delay there. So next up, we have Discussion of Marvin Heritage District Code and Resilience.
So I just want to open this up and let you all know that the Form Based Code was presented to you all last couple of meetings. You've had the opportunity to go over it. However, I will say Tom has gone over the presented format and does suggest a few minor changes. So I'm not going to ask him to go over the entire packet with you. We'll do that at the public hearing. But I do want to, I do want him to highlight the changes that he recommends so that y'all will note that, and then we will potentially set this public hearing at a later item in the agenda, and y'all can go over the packet in full at that public hearing. So we just want to highlight the changes.
Okay, thank you, Christina. This is a great body of work. I know it took probably over a year from inception. I've been involved with it for about two months or so, mostly just helping Rogan find the instrument or tool where to put all these great ideas for the vision of the area, which is in what's called a Form Based Code. What's interesting is that 160D, we just, we adopted so many changes in effort to that. Now formally recognizes Form Based Code as a, you know, allows as much as conventional or other tools in zoning. So it really strengthens the ability to do that. But in that, they do make sure local governments don't go too far. So they say what can and cannot go into Form Based Codes if it's a straight zoning district. There's another method called conventional zoning that also allows Form Based Codes to, and other ways, other regulations to work. But that requires the written permission of all the property owners in that district. So the one area that we really are not allowed to do that is in here, and it was, it's been in here for a while. I just didn't keep my eye on it to make sure it came out, or if we selected another mechanism instead of the straight zoning, possibly could have stayed in there. But the part is, 160D-702C does not allow local governments to set minimum building size for one and two family dwellings. So throughout this, there are some tables and references where we have a range of square footage for homes, and we need to take out the minimum in that range. We could leave the maximum, but that, the lower numbers throughout need to come out, absolutely. So that's the first item, and before there, the second. Are there any questions on that need to change?
So you're just eliminating the minimum and just showing the maximum that...
Yes. And I think that'll take care of itself with the lot size and the cost of investment and construction. I think the minimum will be, will take care of itself. I don't think people will go too small on that, but it's definitely something that needs to come out. They didn't really even offer that as an option in any other way, so.
Is that, is that become a legal issue that we do keep the minimum thing in there, the minimum square footage?
It certainly does, yes. And the School of Government I mentioned, UNC School of Government, that is just a great resource for planners and, like you, always look at their website. They put out a question and answers piece on 160D. And one question, may local governments establish a minimum size for one and two family dwellings? Note, 160D-702C now prohibits this for any structures subject to the regulations according to all the residential codes for one and two family dwellings as a result of 2019 legislation. So they don't even offer an option. It's clear.
Straight up, yes. Well, then, we have to comply with, so.
What were the other changes?
Okay, the next is, there's, has been some talk of making this area an MSD, a Municipal Service District. Let me say, I don't have experience in that area, but I do know that it should not go in a zoning regulation such as this Form Based Code. So if the village wants to pursue that, they'll need to work with an expert in that area to use the right instrument to make that happen. So I recommend removing the MSD language in this code.
And I'll also note here, I'm not an expert in this creation of MSD, but I do believe that this is a tax overlay district that has to be approved at the beginning of a fiscal year to be in effect. So that being said, we wouldn't be able to do anything until July 1st of 2022, if I'm stating that correctly. I could be wrong, but I don't think that I am. I think you have to do it, just as any other tax, increase or decrease.
Makes sense.
So this, oh, this change in Heritage District, you're referring to the tax assessment? We can't, if we allow this to move forward, the tax consequence to the individual landlord doesn't take effect?
Not until y'all enact that overlay, that tax overlay, which again, I believe has to be done at the beginning of a fiscal year.
Right, but he is suggesting that we get an expert in this? Is this someone we're going to have to hire?
He's suggesting that we remove it from the zoning language because it's illegal for us to include it in the zoning language. So we're talking about just simply taking it out of this packet that you see in front of you? I'm just simply reiterating the fact that if we do an overlay district, tax overlay district, to help fund some of the infrastructure needs, I believe it has to be done at the beginning of a fiscal year, which is too late to do now at this point in time.
Okay.
Two separate things.
But seeing that we don't have the expert, seeing we don't, okay, seeing we don't have the expertise in this area, could we, could we be looking at hiring someone to that? Or is that some, how does that, where do we turn to?
So with the creation of an MSD overlay, tax overlay, we would have to hire a separate Main Street program manager to oversee some of these things? That's something that would happen later on down the road and once we get to a point where we actually have programs, infrastructure needs and that sort of thing, that the usage of that tax would be going towards. We wouldn't have the in-house staff to handle that. And I think there's additional funding for that with the Main Street program of North Carolina. Yes, obviously that's something that none of us have experience in. So I don't know if we would want to hire an expert to look into that for us, but for this sake of this conversation, we're merely talking about removing that language from the Form Based Code. The separate idea of establishing that tax overlay is completely separate topic.
Which we can attack that at another time. I'm fine with removing it out of there. If that's a legal issue, then I'm fine with removing it at this point, and then just move on to that as we get to it.
Okay.
We have a whole year to talk about MSD.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll move to the third item. And Rogan did bring this up with the, Marvin Heritage District Strategic Plan Committee. They fully understood what I'm about to say, but I just don't see where we have a statement in here of what I need to mention. The 160D does not let local governments apply some design criteria in their zoning ordinance or Form Based Code. And I want to make sure that we just have a statement that these images that we have in here are suggested, not required, so nobody is misled. Having those images in there will be absolutely terrific to leave though, because it tells people what the vision is for the area. And so the part that I'm referring to out of 160D is 160D-702B, any regulation related to building design elements adopted under this chapter may not be applied to structures subject to regulations under the North Carolina Residential Code for one and two family dwellings. And there are some exceptions. Regulations prohibited by this subsection may not be applied directly or indirectly in any zoning district or conditional district unless voluntarily consented to by the owners of all the property to which those regulations may be applied as part of and in the course of the processing of seeking and obtaining a zoning amendment or zoning subdivision or development approval, nor may such regulation be applied indirectly as part of a review pursuant to statute of references. And it just keeps going on. And then for the purposes of what I just read, building design elements means exterior building color, type, or style of exterior cladding material, style of materials, roof structures, or porches, exterior non-structural architectural ornamentation, on and on. But it does tell you what you can regulate. The phrase "building design elements" does not include the following: height, bulk, orientation, or location of a structure on a zoning lot, the use of buffering to screen, to minimize visual impacts, to mitigate the impacts of light and noise, or to protect the privacy of neighbors, or regulations adopted pursuant to this article governing the permitted uses of land or structures subject to the North Carolina Residential Code for one and two family dwellings. So a lot of the work in this code does relate to what is allowed. The size and being the bulk, the height, orientation, the privacy issue for the neighbors, and so on. The part that we can't regulate is the architectural style and materials. And that was really in place before 160D, but 160D clarifies it even better. So everybody understood that in the committee. We just need to put a statement in there. What's kind of fortunate for me, and in that Rohit is not here to go through this, these codes need to stand on their own. People that weren't really part of the authorship in writing it should be able to pick it up and understand it, and design teams and property owners. So we don't want the person that was here that wrote it to have to say what I just said. We need to have a statement there to that effect. So that's the third change, is simply to say that the aesthetics of what we can't regulate are not mandated.
That's only the register, right, that that impacts and doesn't impact the commercial?
Right, we can do that all day long on the commercial. Obviously, you go too far, a property owner is going to come to a public hearing and speak against it. And you as leaders, you know, you need to have, put the reins on how far this can go. But you can have architectural regulations on the non-residential part, and you do. And I think it's appropriately tailored for what you want to achieve.
And then, so, but you did say that we could come to an agreement with an individual property owner as to what we can, what they can do in there if we come to an agreement with them?
Yes, so there's a tool called conditional zoning. And I brought this up a couple of times with Rohit, and it sounded like his response was the village council wants to move forward with kind of a straight zoning, which this is still a straight zoning even though it's Form-Based Code. Conditional zoning is allowed, and what that is, is you need the written consent of all the property owners in the district to have additional regulations than what the statutes allow us. And the statute tells you this. And then there are some avenues for, if there are some modifications, do you have to go back to all the property owners or just a few, or just the one in that area? So that's contemplated too, that'll need to occur sometimes. But yes, it would be like you are working with the property owners until you achieve their agreement that they're in full support and they let you conditionally zone this.
So it could only be, so you could, so I guess what I'm asking is, so these properties that are zoned mixed-use or residential element, if we came to an agreement with the individual property owner, has to what type of architecture that could be allowed in there? That is allowed to do as long as we joke with those individual property owners and discuss it with them and get it in writing from them? And then it becomes how it's done from there on out? Is that my understanding?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but in a conditional zoning district, yes. But we're talking about strictly a straight overlay district here. So as far as this stands, the answer would be not less than voluntary.
This, right, this, what we're doing with this, as it's written, it is zoning. It's not even an overlay. If this is adopted, these are the rules.
So let me put the question in context. Say Councilman Wortman has a residential tract here. He wants to put in houses. We obviously know we can't regulate the minimum housing size, but let's say we want something that looks similar to what you have right there behind you, the architectural standards. As it's, if it's proposed, adopted right now as it's proposed, could we say, hey, we want you to make it look like that?
No.
Okay, so only if it's voluntary unless we do a conditional district overlay after we do the primary rezoning. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So we would, okay, so, and I guess the reason why I'm asking is because there were certain ideas that we want this to look like, and without having some way to govern that, give it a parameter, so to speak, then we would not be able, we wouldn't be able to achieve what we're trying to do. Now, the commercial is going to be the nuts and bolts along the street side. But we do have some of these that we, you know, in these mixed-use parcels, where we want it to kind of, you know, meld together with the architectural design that we're looking for with the commercial. So that's, is that something that we need to look at, is doing a conditional use overlay after we adopt this Form-Based? Is that, you know?
Did you have a, maybe you have to vote up?
I was looking at page 31 when you were talking about, you know, and I'm almost reading this. Bottom paragraph that says, "Per NCGS 160D-702, municipalities cannot regulate the architectural style nor minimum size of the one and two dwelling residences unless they lie in a historic district." Have we discussed that?
That's a state historic district.
That is one of the conditions I skipped when I read it. But if it's in a historic district, you're allowed to have some aesthetic regulations. I don't think square footage, I don't think square footage under any conditions allowed, so.
But Tom, what is the definition of a historic district? Because I think it's state designated. I don't think we can.
Because we talked about some of that, and, you know, because, especially because the store is a historic building. So we, you know, we had talked about the historic district as well to kind of help. You know, this whole historic look to kind of come into effect, but I don't know. Because I did see that there was something in the news recently about a building in Charlotte that they're considering becoming a historic building because it's 60 years old. Is there, you know, I'm not sure about how all that, that works, how it becomes a historic district.
In other words, if that would help us if, if we, I mean, we hadn't discussed it, but I mean, if we move and became a historic district, I don't know what the nuts and bolts of doing that is, but would that help us or assist us?
So I'll say that Tom doesn't know the answer to everything here because he's really not been involved in this entire process.
Right.
I am pretty sure that means a state designated historic district. There's not a definition in the code that you have presented before you that defines what a historic district is. Those definitions are on page 42. The historic district does definitely have statutory guidelines and regulations that are in general statute, however, we don't have those in front of us. I don't know if you can answer that question?
I have a lot of, I do have a lot of experience in historic preservation. I created a historic district and administered several where it was already a district. It takes, it takes a long time to establish one. You do have to write the guidelines for them. You have to appoint a historic zoning commission. And usually you have to have a pretty good representation of someone like an architect, a realtor, blazer. There's a couple of recommended ones. And that comes from the Certified Local Governments CLG program that is a resource for historic preservation for local governments. But anyway, you have to have that kind of good cross-section in your historic zoning commission. And you, you would do it. You know, you have to have meetings and inform and write the regulations that are tailored to your characteristics. You have to do a survey of historic structures. And it is, it's really, we're talking about a one or two-year project. And that's if you have a good stock of structures.
We only have one that would qualify.
It's, in a nutshell, it's not just, we call it a historic district. There's a process that goes along.
I'm sure there is, and I know that there are lots of them. There are several in Charlotte. There's all kinds of different things. I just, you know, I was curious if that was going to be something that we want to pursue, because we do have a historic building that we would like to preserve as a historic building, but, you know, is it worth the process to go through? It sounds like it's a one- to two-year program to get that into that. So should we still consider that? Or, you know, I don't know which direction we should go from here as far as that specific building to start with. And then can that kind of, you know, filter in to the rest of the district that we're trying to kind of achieve this?
My, my answer to that is it's somewhat of a misuse of the historic preservation program because you're trying to regulate all the infill that's going in around one or two structures where historic preservation is really intended to recognize a pretty good concentration of historic structures, and you want to regulate the changes to those and some of the infill that's going to go in on some of the vacant lots around it. But I think it's kind of the reverse of the purpose that historic preservation is created. And I think you would end up at one point of a one or two-year process coming to that realization that that just wasn't the avenue that we showed out.
Which is probably why it's best we named it Heritage District as opposed to Historic District.
So the end game, it sounds like, goes to have more regulatory control slash authority over residential units at the end of the day, whether that is to encourage it with the guidelines that we keep in here and just hopefully they keep it voluntary, or to create some type of conditional zoning for those residential areas. So Tom?
And unfortunately, unfortunately, I think the HOAs of our development are the ones that can kind of have a say on what the look of the homes would be rather than the government. Is that correct? If there was an HOA, because we're dealing with two different things. In commercial, we're able to control is what I'm hearing, what this look and feel is that we're trying to create in the downtown Heritage District. And I know we talked years ago about a historic district, and that was something that was, I think we determined that, if we could look at it again, that that's not something we wanted to go down because of the process and what that would do. But for homes, Andy, if we're trying to control, we'll look at what the outside of a home is going to look like. I think that's something that's probably the developer decides, are they not?
Yeah, and that's, that's what we're discussing, is guidelines of what the developer can put, which would require conditional use zoning overlaying so that we don't get something that we don't really want that is visible in the districts. Because what I'm more concerned about is the mixed-use parcels, that you're going to have the businesses that we have that look, we want the residential to have that look to go along with it. The, if there's a, you know, this other parcel that's all residential, I don't care what kind of houses go in there, to be truthful, because it's, it's going to be kind of, it's going to be hidden by buffering anyway. You're not going to see these residences. So, and the developers want to make the community cohesive anyway. That's just the way it's going to be built. The HOA isn't even considered until after the construction is done. They're only there to maintain the quality of the property after the fact. So it's more of what's, what gets built. And that's maybe, maybe that's the only thing that we need to look at is just the conditional use overlay for the mixed-use parcels to keep consistency in the architecture in those.
So I'm just asking, why legally are we not allowed to do a minimum square footage?
The legislator says you can't.
So I put in tiny homes.
That would be allowed.
That's where I got a problem, because, I mean, the explosion of tiny homes, someone goes, hey, we'd put it in Marvin. We'd put a whole development in Marvin. Because it's minimum, now, I know it's state regulated, but then we got a bunch of tiny homes. You want to talk about people raising hell.
But we do have one-acre lot minimums.
Yes.
I get it, but I could put a ti, that'd be great, because you know what? I'm gonna buy my one acre. I'm gonna put my tiny home on there. It costs me, I'm gonna do a really nice one. It's gonna cost me about $90,000. Now I'm living in Marvin. I am going to be, they will, they will hang us all right up there.
Same thing applies to modular homes, if I'm not correct.
You can't prohibit modular homes, but you do have a minimum lot size.
Modular homes are not an issue. They're, from my opinion, a modular home's built better than a stick-built.
Well, I mean, like mobile trailers, that kind of stuff.
You can't not, because they have eliminated mobile homes from just about everywhere.
I don't think we can say you can't have a trailer.
I, because they're, they're not allowed anywhere anymore, pretty much, unless you're in a, like a rural setting. There's no, municipalities allow them.
There are mobile homes that we think of that come in on a trailer. You, you can regulate where those go and have a zoning district for them. And this wouldn't be where those would be allowed. But to get back to your question, Mr. Wortman, yes, in the mixed-use area where you do have residential and non-residential, that could be an area where we talk about conditional zoning with the property owner, because they are, you know, it helps protect them sort of, their investment, whether they do the residential or they sell that part, but it still has that overlay of the aesthetics and they do the commercial part, or they do both, but they're consistent, you know, aesthetically. And so that might be another area to focus in on where you have conditional zoning on just that sort of sub-district, or do you, you'd have to get all the property owners in there, which I don't think there's many of, and then leave the rest as the straight zoning that's, you know, part of this Form-Based Code. I don't think there's like a minimum size of what a conditional zoning district has to be by any means. So that might be a good way to.
But, but I don't mean to cut you off, but to Joe's point on HOA. Joe, I believe that in Firethorn, there's a minimum 3,200, 3,500 square feet?
But that's after construction has.
I get it, but again, my concern, you have Little Havana, you got Little Italy, now we have Little Marvin.
Well, you bring up a good point, because there is no minimum. Now, you could, so, so these mixed-use people could put eight little thousand-square-foot houses on there and call it, call it good. It doesn't, they don't have to be 2,000 or 5,000 square foot or whatever.
Can, but can an HOA, before that gets approved, Christina, can HOA go in there and, I guess, be the, be the so-called developer slash HOA and say there's going to be a minimum?
Absolutely, but we have no control over that.
Right. That's the thing. It's all private.
Because I'll be honest with you, I, listen, I'm looking for a place to move in Marvin, because I don't want what I have now as a single, you know, as one person living in a house. I'll be the first to buy one. And guess what? I'm gonna put in an 800-square-foot house because that's all I need. Someone is going to raise hell.
Well, I think, Jimmy, what, the way that I understand it is, you know, the values of the land, it's, it's, it's almost happened by, you're going to have one-offs like yourself that may just want to build a small home, but I think the issue is, that's like being in a development. A developer is going to want to, you know, present homes and buys a tract that he can put four new homes in. He's going to want to get the most bang for his buck. But the individual like you, we, I don't. his buck. But the individual like you, we, I don't believe what I'm hearing, but I understand in the past that we can control any size building if someone wants to do that. The problem is because land has increased so much, especially in Marvin, because it's a desired area, typically you won't find that individual that's going to buy that small tiny home and put it in a one-acre lot because of the cost that they're paying for the lot itself. Then when, if the individual was buying from a developer, that developer typically has a plan that says, okay, there are going to be 3,000 square-foot homes and stuff like that. Not all the homes get built. And that's where the HOA comes in and says, okay, we're going to say, if you want to continue to make the homes look like the rest of the homes in the development, the HOA gets involved and becomes the governing arm that says, okay, minimum 3,200 square feet. And that's, that's how that gets rectified, if I can use the word.
Joe, I totally, I totally agree with you. I'm 100% online with what you're saying. I just have a little bit of a heartburn. Because you and I both know, for as much as I'm agreeing with you, you know, as well as all of us know, there is a, 10% of the population here in the United States are always looking for a way to bend the rule and find the exception and snub their nose at everybody else. And that will happen. So I'm bringing it up. I know it's a legal, I know it's, it's a state legal thing.
So there's a, it sounds like.
I think there's anything we can do about it.
Well, it, there is. I mean, we can do a conditional zoning district, for sure. But it sounds like, in a nutshell, you guys want us to go back to the drawing board and look at some more options for us to have some more residential control within this district. Is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, I'm fine with the, with the form-based code and pushing that through.
I file forms too.
I think we need to look at the conditional zoning overlays and really dive into that and see what would work the best for an overlay on top of this.
So my question at that point in time is, do we need to do the conditional at the same time concurrently with the MHD? Or can we go back after the, the primary rezoning is done and do a overlay conditional? Or do they need to be done concurrently?
I would think, as sort of the creator and elected officials over this, you want to know how it's all going to look and work.
At the time of the election.
At the same time. You don't want any loose parts. Because 160D, for one thing, and this form-based code, you're, you're already at a pretty low density. But once you create new districts and your existing districts, you can't downzone. You can't lower the density anymore. 160D only lets you do that if you have consent of the property owner. So that's another one of those property owners like, and developers like this. That's one of the tools. So I would think you would want to do both at the same time so you don't regret your first move in case the second move.
So if I can, can I make a point? So Tom, let me ask, and I may be reducing this way down from the very beginning. Like you said, the form-based code, I've been participating in the planning board, you know, discussions. The form-based code looks great, okay? But this all started with us wanting a heritage district or, this has been going on for many years, we wanted a heritage district. When the feasibility study came in and said to support it, we need to put in residences to basically on both ends or however way it would be functioned and best for our area. That's where the stickiness came in, that we basically said, okay, within the heritage district, within this district, we're going to then have residential to support it. And that's where then all of a sudden, here's where we are, is that, no, we can put a minimum on the square footage. You can only put a maximum, whatever. That's where the sticky part is, right? Am I breaking it down really?
I reviewed and watched the DFI report.
Yeah.
But I, you know, sort of my role is, is sort of help write the regulations. None of the finance or if it's feasible or not.
Right.
And I think it's.
I'm not asking you about the feasibility study, just the fact that we worked that into the district as opposed to just commercial. We were talking about whatever, mixed-use, whatever we were looking at. Then we decided, okay, we may want to look at residential to support it. That's where the issue is at this point.
The residential part to support it, I think where that came from really isn't the customer base for the commercial. I don't know that that was intended. I think at that time it was a charge to DFI. Let's think about the property owner. Are they going to make a profit if they can do this much commercial but this much residential? And the commercial didn't really justify it because there's not a market for kind of small retail in itself. So you're going to need to build houses. Well, how many? Well, quite, quite a few and a little denser than your low-density now. So I think that's where that came from. Not so much the customer base at the coffee shop and all that. Because you're going to have people that can walk or drive over for that.
But what I was just asking is, the point that Councilman Lyon is basically saying is that, uh, what? And, and it's because we included residential in the district. That's what I'm just asking.
Right. That's why, because you included it and you wanted some supportive surrounding property owners who do have a say, I mean, you take that into account, you wanted to buffer it. And you wanted to make it usable property, not just, you know, farmland or something forever. And Councilmember Lyon's scenario of wanting to sort of downsize in a smaller unit would really be the perfect market for, for this product. And it is a matter of developer having private covenants. When they go to talk to someone about buying and selling them land to build, that they would need to understand if they wanted a minimum square foot, that they also have to have aesthetic regulations. And so they could control that, but we cannot play any role if, if the developer, the homeowner, whoever is the second owner, not maybe the developer applicant, but some builder buys it from them, and they're not very diligent in, in seeing those through. Call comes into village hall, we can't help, you know, what do you mean they put up concrete block or building it different size and all that? We can only regulate the height and the setbacks and the number of the height, the lot size and that kind of thing. So the, I'm a huge fan of this project in Black Mountain, North Carolina called Village of Cheshire. It's just south of 40, across the interstate from downtown Black Mountain. Go on, and they have their own website. That's, it's all public streets. And they have terrific cottage structures. Some, I think there might be some pictures in here from, of the commercial part. I don't know that we got any pictures of the cottages. But really upscale, well-designed, you know, nice porches, good materials, very close to each other, 15 feet or so to the next one. But when you do kind of a cottage look, it actually can enhance the landscape. And you know what's going to be next door. You don't have a big property to maintain. And you know that they're going to live by the same standards. So whether that's a private covenant or the property owner says, I want to do mixed-use, thank you for allowing that ability. What do I sign? Sign me up with the conditional zoning so I can do the commercials, but I can also have my buyers follow your rules. And guess what? The village would be the police on the, on the enforcement, not the homeowners association that might get lax over time. So anyway, the Village of Cheshire, I met the developer. And he was the son of a tennis player that had, had a nice camp there. And he just wanted to do a high-quality development and is doing great. Don't move, you know, don't go check it out and move there. But please look at that development and the prices and the, and the phases. They continued strong through the recession and through COVID. So high quality is sought after, even if it's small. But we just cannot regulate square footage ourselves without the property owner's consent. And I don't think even with the consent, this square footage, that doesn't even look like that's an option. Only the aesthetics of the materials and all that. I don't know that there's any tool where we can regulate square footage of one and two-family dwellings. Anyway, sorry, that third item got kind of long. The fourth was the administration on page 40. It makes reference to who's going to get to review these plans when they come in. And it says something to the effect that the village shall establish one or more boards or committees specific to the review and administration of development proposals. That just seems a little too open-ended. I would tighten that up a little bit to decide, yes, we're going to appoint a committee to do that and, and go ahead and plan for that and start seeking applications. But just to say, for now, to be a staff review, then later at some point, we're going to replace this for an appointed board. I think that's the fourth and sort of final area. I think it needs a little more work. This, this product, believe me, if you went up and hired a consultant to do this, it would, it's a $300,000 project plus. And when I asked Rohit, what have you done on it so far? When he told me, and he told me about the charrette, the complaint, reinforces it, just happens to be 160D now reinforces form-based code, everything he said, every step has been right on the committee that was formed. You are, you're 90% there, 90 to 99% there. So I didn't want to bring any bad news. And these four changes could probably be made quickly. But it sounds like you want to take a little more time with it. And whether it's something you want to wait on the planner for and get him or her comfortable for, with, and proceed, it's up to you. But I always think the most success is going to be when you have property owner buy-in and support. This is marketing for them. When this is adopted, you're going to want this online. You're going to want posters up in village hall and in the new village hall that basically shows these tables and charts. I was the, I was the chief land use planner for a special district that regulates the Walt Disney World Resort. And so I was there during the whole development of the villages, the town of Celebration. And they devoted a whole room to very expensive real estate, just so when people came in to hear and learn about it, they could see the images and, and the regulations and expectations, even some of the finishes on the wall, you know, kind of mockups of what it was going to look like. And they had, they had to have a lottery system to sell it. That's how much demand they had and national attention. So I think that you're going to have a lot of interest in this. And a lot of people will be glad everything is in one package. They don't have to go through several cross-references in your zoning ordinance. And that in itself will attract quality developers that bang their heads against the brick wall trying to get places to think about doing something like this. You've already got it in place. I mean, you're making it very easy. And you have every right to bring it up to the standards that 160D allows and reinforces. You just have to get everything, keep, keep working on it, polish it up.
So I'll, I'll just kind of.
Go ahead. So it sounds like to me that we still have some work to do on cleaning this up and kind of getting it to where we want it. So Tom, can you continue to help us with that and work with the new planner that's coming in?
I can, as long as Christina authorizes it. Your committee is doing an amazing job. Don't put it in, continue to have it as a collaborative process. And keep taking the phone calls and emails from the property owners inside and outside. That's the best thing about this, is it's been so collaborative.
Okay. So potentially we have some more work to do. I mean, what I'm hearing is, one, we're not going to do anything with this right now because we still need to update it some more. But the next item on the agenda is to call for a public hearing. So it sounds like we're not in the position to do that yet.
I mean, if we, if we make these suggested changes, would we be then? I mean, these sound like simple changes that just need to be amended. So is that?
Aside from the conditional zoning, which he's recommending, we do it at the same time.
Okay. So then we, so you want to, so we should wait then and do the conditional zoning work and do it in conjunction with this?
Hypothetically, let's say we approve this on July 13. I'm just going to put that out there. And we fail to come back with the overlay conditional for two months or for whatever reason. We have no regulatory control from that two-month period over the aesthetics of those residentials. So what he's suggesting.
So they just start building something in the process?
That's correct. So what he's, am I correct in that statement?
Yes.
So what he's suggesting is we do it, we figure out how we want to do it from the conditional standpoint and do both of them at the same time.
Gotcha.
So if we want to maintain that residential aesthetic control or guidance, we need to do the conditional at the same time as the MHD. Am I correct in that statement?
That's correct. And how great will it be to have the property owner there and something in writing that he or she supports it?
So, so for now, should, do we need just have consensus to make these changes and then start working on the conditional use?
And just to be clear, the term, because there's, it kind of forced us, 160D, to work within the phrases. And if anybody's watching, conditional zoning is what that tool is called.
Conditional zoning, okay. So we need to, so we need just have consensus on these changes then right now, right? Because as far as I'm concerned, from my standpoint, I agree with the changes. And I think they should be made to the form-based code, at least that portion of it. I don't, I don't know what everybody else's thoughts are, but that's my thought anyway.
Is everybody in agreement that we would like more residential control over the aesthetics? Am I hearing that?
Yes.
Yes.
And that being said, that's a, a larger feat in and of itself besides just the minor changes that he wants to do. I, to be honest with you, I'm not sure if we can make those changes in the short time that we've got the public hearing scheduled.
Right.
So I would suggest y'all consider giving staff more time before the public hearings.
Yeah, I got no problem with that. I'm just, the only thing that I'm saying is, is the changes to the form-based code that were presented is, I'm, I'm fine with those changes. I was wondering if we had consensus with the changes to the form-based code. And as far as.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, then moving on to the conditional zoning, yes, absolutely. I'm behind that 100% to move forward with putting that together and moving the, the hearing back to accommodate the time that it takes to do that.
I need, I do need to tell you all this. If you delay the public hearings, I'm going to need you to take an immediate recess. The newspaper's deadlines are today. So I need to go revise those documents immediately so that we don't schedule a public hearing in the newspaper that won't happen.
Gotcha.
So just wait until we get to item number three and then we can do that?
Okay.
Or four. It might be four.
It's three and four, yeah.
Okay.
So we're all in agreement that we want a conditional?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right? Okay. And we, we as staff know what we need to do for, for this item. And it's going to take longer than, than needed. So we'll get to the next item on the agenda, which is setting the public hearing. And then we can talk about this again.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for letting me talk to you all about that.
Thank you, Tom.
No, we appreciate you.
Yeah, we really appreciate you.
You're welcome. It looks like before we.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. I think before we go to number four, I did see that number three did have some other miscellaneous amendments that didn't have anything to do with the heritage district. Let's see. Let's see if that's right. No, okay. So the other one was to assign a section in the zoning ordinance heritage district. So that did have something to do with the, okay, yeah, there's something, remove the large-track, small-track system of classifying subdivisions. That's part of number three. And also, remove the village center district signage from signs. We don't really have to worry about that. That's some housekeeping because that gets replaced when you do the other. And what was, any other? So the only other miscellaneous, the miscellaneous item was the bit about the, maybe, that's printed, your.
The small-track, large-track?
Large-track, small-track.
Landscaping. There's landscaping in there as well.
You mean the roadway median ordinance?
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the small-track, large-track, Rohit was, previously said that it was, it was confusing language. So the planning board cleaned up that language to make it more clear and concise as to what it's referring to.
So we can keep the public hearing then and have these minor amendments? Because you have to have a public hearing for the amendments anyways.
Yes. I.
You have to change.
I might need a longer recess, but.
You just need to change the verbiage in, in how you present the public hearing, correct?
That's right.
Yes.
Okay. Makes sense. Makes sense.
Do we normally have public hearings for, I guess we do for text amendments, yeah? Okay, so I have to go, I have to figure out that language and fast. So are we on number three now or...
No.
Okay.
Are we going to move to number three?
So just, just so we're clear, Tom.
Right.
The other minor amendments included the large track, small track definition, the landscape buffer for the roadway. What was the R Marvin zoning?
That's if you made a move to adopt the form-based code, just that there's a place for it in the zoning ordinance to reference. So that's a moot point now.
Okay, and what about the tree sections?
In the median, in the medians, was that what?
I don't know. It just says, it's chapter 93.06 and 93.22.
Okay.
Yeah, it is the median. It's, oh no, that's future buffer.
Is that the same ordinance?
Large track subdivision.
Okay, let's see. Yeah, that's why I...
Are you looking at the small track, large track?
So we're going to keep the small track, large track? And then we're going to keep the landscaping public hearing? Correct. Okay, we'll work on that on our end and if there's anything we miss, we'll schedule that. But that being said, when we move on to the next item, we just need to amend that public hearing for the reasoning, taking out the MHD.
And now I need a recess.
Okay.
And I think this landscaping you're seeing is part of the large track, small track.
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
It's just that there's a seal, village seal on every page, so it's hard to tell if it's new or not, a new item, but it's all one, one item.
Okay.
Tom, do you have the ordinance section for the roadway median? If not, I can look it up. It's just a curious, you have it on where you're about.
Yeah, the roadway median section.
So we can close this item?
Yes.
Unless y'all have further direction for staff on item number two, I think we know where we need to go with this. And I just want to reiterate that it's going to take more time than to the public hearing.
We just need to get it right.
Yeah.
So, absolutely.
I'd agree with that. So that said, if we are all in agreement to move on to number three, nothing needs to be done.
No, I don't think so. Can I interrupt? So if I'm going to say this at the top, I need a hard stop at 12. I haven't shared this to you, so is everybody in agreement that we can kind of stop shop and move this along?
I'm good.
Okay.
Nope.
And that includes the time for closed session, you guys.
Okay.
We're good.
Let's roll.
Play it for that. Awesome. Okay, so moving on to number three, a considered call for public hearing for zoning text changes related to adoption of Marvin Heritage District. Another minor miscellaneous amendments to be held on July 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM at Village Hall, 104 Newtown Road.
So we just need to amend this to say call for a public hearing for zoning text changes for miscellaneous?
That's correct.
Text changes to be held on July 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM at Village Hall, 1004 Newtown Road.
Is there a motion or is that just directions?
That's the motion.
Okay, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes and moving on. Consider call for public hearing reserving application number 21-12663 municipal rezoning of properties to marking Heritage District zoning to be held on July 13th, 2021 at 6:30 PM at Village Hall, 1004 Newtown Road.
So I make a motion to postpone it until we have more information on the district code.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes and Austin, you're asking for a quick little recess so you can go...
Wait, wait, I'm sorry.
Even 10 minutes will help.
I will take the minutes while he's gone, so he can go do what he needs to do and I'll take the minutes.
Okay, great.
Just pass me the computer when you get a chance.
Go do it, Austin.
And the only thing that you're doing in the public hearing notice is the small track, large track subdivisions.
Okay, I'll have to figure it out.
So that, all that is is to just... Give me the changes, right?
All right.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good to move on?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, to move on?
Yes.
Okay, next up we have, we have discussion, number five, discussion and consideration of ordinance imposing solid waste collection fee and providing collection of property taxes.
So inside of your agenda packets, you will see some relevant information about the solid waste and recycling as a municipal service. I'm just going to kind of read over this to number one, make the minutes easier, but number two, make sure we get all the information out to the public. Basically, in a nutshell, the notice was sent out in December for the notice received with solid waste collections. We did make a decision to move forward with active at the June 8th, 2021 meeting. Those services consisted of weekly solid waste and recycling, holiday tree collection, Marvin logos on the trucks and the cans, and contingent services on electronics based off of weight and paint collection based off of the cost. At the time of this writing, staff is still under negotiations with active for these fees. However, to date, we have estimated an annual cost of $244,000, I'm sorry, $244 per household for, again, weekly solid waste, recycling, once-a-year curbside electronics event, once-a-year bulk and white good drop-off at Village Hall. We will have a, basically an assisted drop-off if residents want to do this. We will have a forklift and active will basically do that for the vendors. We will have logos on the trucks and the carts. Consumers are currently paying anywhere from $336 a month up to, I'm sorry, not a month, a year, up to $372 a year just for solid waste and recycling. We are estimating an annual savings of over $110 for each resident and we will be able to provide more and better services for our residents. We will also have a dedicated staff member to process customer service issues, so hopefully our service will be better than what people are currently getting from active. In this first year, we do have a $10,000 contingency due to unknowns when implementing a new service, so we'll hopefully not have to use that. If we don't use it, we will offset any future increases in prices based off of consumer index increases or fuel surcharges to have a lesser impact on these residents. This $244 fee per year will be prorated for the first year because we will not begin services until April 1st of 2022. So basically, when taxpayers get their statements at the beginning of this fiscal year, usually in the fall of this year, they will see a $61 service fee for solid waste collections. They will be paying this in advance for services to be rendered in April, May, and June of 2022. It is important that we get ahead of public notice because people are going to be questioning why they're getting this fee and not being able to use it until the end of the year. Every taxpayer will be assessed this fee regardless if they use it or not, so that's very important for y'all to realize here. So people that are not currently getting solid waste, that are taking their trash directly to the foxhole, they will continue, they will still have to pay for this fee. So just want to make sure everyone knows that. They will not have, residents will not have a choice in their vendor once this is selected because we will actually be doing a franchise agreement with this one vendor, so that's really important in this decision. What I'm asking you for to knock today is to approve the ordinance that sets forth the fee and it allows us to implement this on the taxpayers' bill and to go ahead with the contract for these services as discussed with active. Tom?
Christina, in this scheme we're collecting, are we building in some money to pay a full-time person?
We are, yes.
Okay.
It's not a super competitive salary, but it is, I think I estimate around 40 to 50. So...
Are there any questions from council, concerns?
I think it's pretty well straightforward at this point. We've already discussed...
We'll beat the hell out of that horse.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the ordinance imposing solid waste collection fee and providing collection of property taxes.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Moving on to the new, number six, discussing consideration of solar traffic calming speed radars?
Inside of your agenda packets, as I, you know, we've discussed traffic calming mitigation items, I just got this in the mail and I said, well, maybe an opportunity for us to buy these two traffic monitoring devices if y'all are interested. We would have to do a budget amendment, pull it from contingency, but it's around $5,000 to $6,000 if y'all are interested. We would still have to do an encroachment agreement with DOT to put these out, but I just wanted to bring it up for discussion if y'all purchase it in it.
So it's very similar to what we already have? That mobile one that we have that the deputies bring around?
Yes, but we, it looks like we would have fixed it.
This would be permanent.
Oh, these would just be attached to the signs?
Yes.
Now, we, actually, I had just an update on that. I had a discussion with Tommy to improve some brackets for him to be able to just hang that on speed limit signs that I'm going to fabricate and donate to the village for that purpose so that they can hang it up higher and secure it to a sign post when they move it around town. We also discussed getting a better solar charger for it because it doesn't keep the battery charged to keep it operational, so that's something that we may need to get.
So if you're speeding, does it take like your license plate or something?
It does not, no. It's really just a scare tactic.
There are, there is some data that they can get from it. They can tell patterns of speeders, times of day, those types of things that they can use for analysis to be able to do speed enforcement. But it doesn't target a particular vehicle, but it does give them a lot of data that they can go by.
I, my opinion is it's just another step further and when you see it, you can't help but think that I'm going, I'm going too fast.
Yeah, for years, traveling to work at South Park Mall and, you know, I always would go down Johnston Road as I'm heading towards Carmel. And over there, you know, just you make that bend, you see it and you, you know, in fact, I actually used it to actually see how well, you know, my speedometer works. I mean, actually, but yeah, it does slow you down and it makes you wonder, this time, is there somebody behind it? Yes, I think it works. We got to do something and I'm in agreement with you, Jamie.
It's a one-time, it's a one-time call and I will, I will tell you, because I thought of the same thing when I, when I looked at this, that at that spot, every single time, if you'll ride down there, slow down and look at the cars in front of you and they all hit their brakes.
They all hit their brakes, yeah. They do.
And the thing of it is, is those people go through there every day.
You know what, and it's funny...
But half the time, there's, a lot of times, there's a cop sitting over there in that park entrance, but that reminds us of that...
Yeah, it does. It makes you, makes you think I'm done.
Yeah.
I will also say, which I, you know, it's funny we're bringing this up because I just was talking about this a week ago, it's 35 there. And you look at the road, that's a major thoroughfare, right?
It's two lanes.
Yeah, this is, this is 45. And I'm sitting there going, and I could hear him just down the road and I'm going, it's amazing. I can't even see the logic why this was 45, but that's a different story. I think it works, but...
And by the way, as we're on it, I would go for the one that says, "Slow down," as opposed to the one that says, "Your speed." And it says, "Slow down, thank you."
Yeah.
Because that one actually, it'll say, like the one over there, if it's anything like that, it flashes. You can't help but see it.
No, you can't help but see it. And from what I also stand, Matthews that has on Independence, you've seen those bigger signs saying, you know, it just gives messages. I've actually seen the police chief and he has said that sign works when it's talking to the drivers and it's saying...
These are, it says, "Your speed" at the very top of it, but the message at the bottom is customizable how you program it. So you just type in what you want it to say, you know, talk to a list of whatever that prints out now.
How many numbers is that?
I was going to say...
I'd give you that. Thank you.
Jamie and I will fight with the keyboard.
Yeah.
What's that?
Guys, it appears that we all agree that this is something we should do, so I guess the question is, if we move forward on this, where, if we get two signs or if we go that direction with just one, are we going each direction for the two signs, one coming one, one the other? Where are we going to locate it?
Marvin, Marvin Road.
And?
I mean, I guess you do it on one end. I mean, everybody's...
I don't know that you wouldn't put one, see, that's the hard part.
I mean, is this, is this for Newtown Road or is this for Marvin Road going towards Waxaw?
No, well, I was going to say Marvin Road going, well, if you're saying there's one on either end, I would say Marvin Road. I mean, that's a start. If you want to put more, we can, but I'm thinking that everybody's accelerating out and going down towards Firethorn, you know, this way, you know, kind of, well, I don't know what north is west. But anyway, and then coming back after they cross the bridge, that's when the acceleration comes, right past the golf course, then they're heading towards the roundabout. But it's probably, if it's going to be one, it would be right here coming off of what would be said soon, roundabout, heading towards Mecklenburg County on Marvin Road.
Realistically, any of the street thoroughfares through Marvin are racetrack. Waxaw Marvin Road is constantly... We do have the mobile one that we can move around as well as we can these and we can move these. I mean, they're just on a bracket that goes on the sign.
I feel like permanent.
So you can move them around. It's just a bracket that goes on the sign and they have solar charging on them, so they could be moved.
But then we have, but then we have to get encouragement agreements from DOT every time we move on.
That's correct.
Right, Christina?
That's correct.
So they, so you've looked into that and so what we have going on right now where we're at, we're in violation, is that what you're saying?
Um...
It's changed to a sign now?
No, that's a mobile, that's a mobile unit. I think that's, I think that's allowable because it's on wheels.
Yeah, it's on a cart, but we, you know, like I said...
But the one at Johnston Road, that's just a permanent.
That's a permanent.
But the city owns that street sign, the whole thing, so they don't have to worry about that.
My thought would be, this is just a thought, would be to start out with two, put one on Waxaw Marvin, and put one on either Newtown or Marvin Road. Start out with that and if we can see a decrease, then we can move toward the next following year's budget to say, maybe we need two more. And two, I think if we have four in tow, but let's see what two gives us and if we see an impact by, and then go with it from there.
I agree.
Yeah, okay, well, that, I mean, that's reasonable. Certainly is reasonable. Your thoughts, Kim, Joe?
That's fine with me, but I think if we do it, then once we get them up, we make sure that Tommy and Mason are hanging out there and showing people that somebody's going to be sitting there to slow that down.
The problem is, is we can't dictate that. We can't tell them that they have to do that according to our contract. We can suggest that.
I didn't say we had to tell them to do it. I said that we can make sure that at some point they are over there. Highly, highly encourage that and I'm sure they will be more than happy to do that.
I'm sorry, I was talking with Austin about the minutes while y'all were talking about the location. Did y'all decide on a location or are we going to come back to that?
I think we come back to that, yeah. But I would say...
It's a good idea.
I'm in agreement.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm in agreement that we go with the two.
Listen, it's all well and good in reality, but getting DOT to approve the encouragement agreement, it's going to be in years, so we've got some time to figure out where we're actually going to put them.
Okay, but we'll proceed, we, we have to do a budget amendment and prior purchasing policy, y'all have to, we have to get three bids anyway. But we'll proceed, we, we have to do a budget amendment and per our purchasing policy, y'all have to, we have to get three bids anyway. So I'll have to either go out for more bids or get y'all to waive, um, the bid requirement. So we'll have some, some things that need to be done, but I just wanted to make sure y'all wanted to proceed with it. We'll do our end, uh, from the staff level and then we'll come back to y'all for further approval.
I will.
That, that sounds great. I think, I think it requires, I, I would say, I would say this would require a little bigger, a deeper dive into specifically where and if we do permanent versus on wheels, cause that may accelerate us a bit, our ability if we can have it on wheels, but if we move it around, but again, my, my thinking is, big picture is we have this in so many areas that becomes an eyesore, if you will, but I get the safety part and it's, I think we really need to think about where we wanna locate these and sort of limit them where the really issues are.
Okay.
For that, but I agree with, so we can move on. I think what we're saying.
Correct, yeah.
But I think we all agree, we all agree that this is something we want to pursue.
Yes.
Okay. That said, um, I don't think any, a motion needs to be made on that. Um, so we'll move on to, uh, seven, the new seven, uh, discussion consideration of waiving three bid requirements per village procurement policy. And entering contract with well vendor for village hallway irrigation amount to exceed fifteen thousand dollars and authorized manager to execute agreement contingent upon attorney of the beer.
So I'll mention that we initially came with the quote that's provided in your agenda packet from Mullis, yeah, DL Mullis. It, if you look at the bottom, it looks like it's about seventy-five hundred, but if you read some of the finite detail, it goes into discussion about over this amount of foot drilling is, is this amount of, um, this additional amount. So again, we won't really know until they actually go out there and start drilling to see when they come up with, where they come up with the, the water. Um. The other company provided a quote, but they roughly did it different, you know, there's, they're not apples to apples. So in all, basically they're about the same cost, just depending on how y'all want to proceed with either, um, up to a certain amount of drilling or to be charged additional after that point. So.
Well, Mullis is saying that in estimate it could be ten to twelve grand, I guess, right?
Right.
When everything's said and done.
Could be up to that, yeah.
Yeah.
That, I'm sorry, yes.
Would be to set a cap and say.
Well, here's, here's the thing about that, just knowing what I know about well drilling, it, it's not up to them. It's not like they're trying to gouge. Just once they hit water.
Yeah.
They hit water, we can't, they can't say, well, we're going four hundred feet down and if we don't hit water, we're gonna pull up and, but you still owe us the money. You gotta go with it to wherever they, whatever they hit water.
Yeah.
And you correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're a hundred percent on the money. So I don't know, do we? I mean, I, you know, I, I know why there's a cap. So Christina can't go crazy with the money, but I, I don't know what cap.
You can't cap or low.
Right. So I don't know. So do you put a thirty thousand dollar cap on it that's, should be well above whatever it needs to be?
Cause once they hit water, they don't go down any deeper. They're, they're there, they're there.
Right.
Y'all, y'all have approved contingency level approvals on my end, up to fifty. So obviously I'm gonna use reason to.
Right.
So I don't, I don't know.
Whatever vendor y'all wanna select, it doesn't matter to us. Just y'all pick one and then I wanna, I do want to reiterate this was not a budgeted item. And then secondly, this, this does not include any piping to get the, from the water source to where it's gonna be irrigated.
Well, that, okay, so the, the when the irrigation system is installed, that includes that portion of it. So they're just gonna, they're gonna go to the source with irrigation system and the source happens to be the well. Now, where the well ends up is, you know, so I just spoke to a well guy that just did one on the job I'm doing and he explained to me that the way it works is, is there's veins that run all through out the area and they just drill until they hit one of those veins. There's not like this giant underground lake that, that you might hit, there's veins of water that run through. So they're gonna pick a spot where it's most likely gonna be water. They don't necessarily know where it's gonna be when they start drilling. So, um, the well drillers take consideration their experience and they pick a spot and then they drill till they find the water there. So we don't know exactly where they're gonna pick. There's gonna be spots that there's gonna be likelier to find it.
But what, I just wanted to make sure y'all understood that once the well is drilled and it's there, there will be an additional cost for taking the pipe to wherever we're gonna irrigate. That, that was not, I am ninety-nine percent sure that was not in the village offerings. I could be wrong, but I don't have them in front of me. I don't think that was part of.
When they estimated the irrigation, of course, that's in the contract with Randolph, right?
I don't know. Is it? Do you know?
I, I'm pretty sure that Tyler said that the irrigation was contracted in the village hall construction.
Okay, well, then if it is, then what I'm saying is, is inaccurate.
So then they would just take, it would just, I guess they probably, when they did the bid, they, they automatically assumed it would be to a meter base or, or to the village hall structure itself, somewhere on the property.
If irrigation is in that contract, which I don't know at this point in time, I don't have the plans, then there will not be an additional cost more than likely.
Yeah.
If there is, then it will be another change order that we'll have to consider.
I, I'm almost ninety-nine percent sure that Tyler told me that the irrigation is in that contract.
Well, then that's great.
That would be.
I would be, I would be blown away if it wasn't because they already know that they have to attach to a source.
It is. And now I remember the conversation because we were talking about putting the, uh, those, uh, pipes under the sidewalks for conduit. And he did say that the irrigation is in the contract, so they'll be, they'll be putting that stuff underground anyway. So.
Okay.
But we'll do the, um, the, um, pipes under the sidewalks for the landscape lighting so that the, the wire can be running sidewalks part two.
And I just, me, I can't confirm or deny that it's in there because I don't have them in front of me. So just so y'all know, we're only talking about the well at this point in time.
Yeah.
You guys are reminding me of the commercial. I was pretty sure what the difference is.
So if y'all can just pick a vendor and then make that motion, whatever vendor y'all want, that's all I need.
Uh, I know Mullis has a really good reputation around the area. They've been around for a very long time and they have a very good reputation. So from my standpoint, I'm fine with Mullis.
I'm the same. I, I know of them. And I've known, I know several people who've had wells done with them, so I'm, I'm, I'm fine with Mullis as well.
So someone, yeah, I'm sorry.
No.
So if someone wants to make a motion to waive the three bid requirement, if y'all are all in agreement of Mullis and then proceed as the staff recommendation that's in there.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the three bid, uh, requirement for the well drilling and go with Mullis well drilling. And the, um, and authorize Christina to, um, enter into the contract and whatever it ends up being, being that it is contingent upon how far they have to do, what the price is gonna be.
Is that acceptable, Christina, that motion?
Yep.
I'll catch that.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, moving on to new number eight is, uh, discussion and consideration potential change order of village Hall site. Christina?
So.
Or is that Austin? Oh, that's Christina.
Man, do y'all get any more to do?
There's a couple of change orders that y'all know we've, we've approved already. Um, I don't have them here in front of me, but some minor aesthetics was one and then some changes to some grading was another. I just received one in my email box before this meeting that was about fifteen thousand dollars for some changes to, um, that were needed from the driveway permit. Um, some of that work, again, I don't know the specifics behind that yet. I have not actually read it. But there's been some other changes that have been proposed that I wanted to talk to you guys about. One of them is, is the moving of the generator and I've got some images in your agenda packets that kinda show where the discussions are taking place. It's completely a cancel decision and I'm gonna let Councilman Warpman lead that conversation. The other one is the stair tread on the exterior facade and Councilman Warpman, if you wanna just kinda go into that.
All right. So as far as the generator is concerned, um, as you all may remember, we had some, uh, lengthy conversations about the corral in the corner of the building, which was going to house, uh, four HVAC exterior condenser units and the generator. And the main concern was the fact that that was going to push out, um, next to the porch, which was gonna create noise and heat and, and such, and plus unsightly look to the, to the property. Um, we delved into whether we could reduce the amount of condenser units. Um, it is not recommended to do that. I've had some conversations with HVAC, uh, professionals that, that told me it's standard for, uh, one unit per thousand square feet in commercial buildings. Um, so that's not a good direction. Um, my solution to that would be to move the generator from that position. And we've discussed this, I think, uh, some of us have, uh, lightly, but moving the generator to its own enclosure and then we can then slide those air conditioning units back towards the corner, which would eliminate that, that issue that we have. After speaking with Tyler and the size and all that stuff, we can still store the trash cans in that enclosure with the air conditioning units, which will not require us to have sidewalk. Originally what we thought about was maybe put the trash cans with the generator, but would cause us to have to have a sidewalk out to that generator corral. At this point, we don't need to do that. So we can store the trash cans there. Um, this would just be a, uh, ten by twenty, um, corral on the other side of the ditch, basically. Which would house the generator unit by itself and give us a little bit of area for exterior storage for such things as signs and et cetera, where it's put away. The cost wouldn't be much. Um, it would require about three hundred square feet of disturbed area, which were still well within that. Um, with the exposed, I mean, the, the disturbed area on the, um, construction site. The only additional cost basically would be, uh, a little more wire and a little more gas line to get it away from the building and the actual vinyl structure. I'm proposing putting gravel for the, for the floor in there rather than concrete. Um, which means it would still be permeable, so there wouldn't be any added impermeable surface on the site, which is environmentally responsible. And I think gravel is just fine for what, what we're trying to achieve here. So, um, my recommendation would be to do this. I don't know what, uh, what everybody else's thoughts are on this, but would also take it away from the building. So when it is going into its maintenance mode, you won't hear it run. It just kind of isolates it and kinda puts it up in the bushes where it's not gonna be seen.
When, when you say not much cost, what, what is not much? Cause everything's relative.
Well, I mean, we're talking about a, a ten by, ten by fifteen, uh, vinyl fence enclosure. That's the biggest cost, I think, of it. I, I, we're talking probably somewhere twenty-five hundred dollars, I think.
Okay.
So, yeah, that was my, number one, my question. I'm not worried about, uh, sound because you don't hear it unless electric is off.
Right.
And the maintenance could be scheduled for a Saturday or Sunday where it kicks on for ten minutes to run the generator. So I'm not worried about that. What I am worried about is how are we? How are we, um, covering this where it's, it's not a visible eyesore, if you will, and a fence, I'm, I'm not a big fan of necessarily. So I know, you know, we may wanna do shrubbery or something like that and a walkway to it, but putting a fence there, I don't think is necessarily appealing to the.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm with you, Joe. I mean, we can add, um, you know, landscaping to kinda obscure everything. We don't have to have a walkway. I mean, it's, there's no requirement to have a walkway to get to the generator. Um, but if you would rather, I mean, I, I think that I think a fence is probably good, but using landscaping to obscure the fence, planting some bushes around the fence. Cause if you put it, cause you can use this as a storage corral for, like I said, for like signs and such. So you'd wanna put them in, in behind a fence. Um, so people can't just walk in there and grab stuff. Um, you can secure it and then you kind of obscure the fence with your plant materials to make it blend. So you don't see it. It's probably the, my thought would be the best plan because it gives, it gives us some multi-use of this area. And then, you know, I mean, it really is no need for a walkway to it because it's just gonna be out there in the yard. Walk to it across the grass.
Now, did you mention too that this could be a place for the trash buggies too?
No, the trash buggies can go with the elimination of the generator here. The trash buggies can go in there. So we don't have to have a sidewalk to take trash buggies out to it. Cause they'll still be by the building.
Okay.
Which they're.
Because I was gonna say, we're talking about a walkway to go in. You would need, if you need trash bags, but we're not doing trash bags.
Right, and that was.
They're gonna be where the AC units are.
Right, and that's why I had that discussion with Tyler about space to make sure that we can get them in there within that enclosure and he assured me that there was plenty of room for that. So there is no need for a sidewalk to take them out to that, which eliminates that cost.
So before y'all, um, go into more discussion about if you're gonna do it or not, I wanna reiterate that this was not budgeted. Um, this would be pulled from contingency if, I don't know what the amount's gonna be of Asmanish, waiting on him to give me some general understanding. So, um, if y'all want to discuss a level of cap of what you're willing to make the motion to, if, if you're going to approve it, but secondly, um, we do not have permit approval and we obviously don't want this change to impact any approval on our permit. So we would not actually make this change until after permits are issued and then we go back and amend those plans. We will likely have to pay our engineer a, a charge to amend the plans. Again, I don't know how much that's gonna be. Um, but I just wanna reiterate that.
Right now, the, the big reason problem is because we don't want these air conditioning units pushed to, you know, next to the porch. I think we were all pretty much in agreement with that. So this was a, an option that, that I kinda worked on coming up with to rectify that situation. So unless you all have changed your mind on that or if you have another idea, I'm very wide open to it. I just.
Well, I've, I've got a couple of things. One, I, I have no idea how much this is gonna cost. That's the first thing. We've already been over on change orders already. So that's my, that's my first thing. My second thing is we don't know what else we're gonna be doing with the property. Um, and I don't know what's gonna be possibly over in the new proposed area and what could go over there. So I hate to put us in a so-called box because the generator's over there and we wanted to put the farmer's market over there in a year or two. Um, I was, I was all for trying to figure out a different place to put the generator because I don't like the air conditioning units really are. But I'm, I'm, I don't, the more that, especially looking at it and hearing you know, that we don't know how much it's gonna cost and, and we don't know what we're gonna do with the rest of the village hall property. I mean, again, I would hate to be like, well shit, we can't put it there because the generator's there.
Well, the generator.
It may be.
It's not that far from the building, Kim. I mean, realistically, it's about twenty feet out. It's not far. It's at the other side of the ditch.
That's, that's, that's fine, but, but we don't have a sidewalk going to the farmer's market. We, the sidewalk where we want it is right by the generator. So then we have the sidewalk walking past the generator. I just, I, I just, I, I, before I make it a decision, I definitely wanna know how much this is gonna cost.
Well, then.
Can I, can I suggest something?
Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, yeah, it's a crazy thought. That was the one that probably said, hey, have we considered a generator? Since this is becoming a mission, listen, every home can have, you, you can go tomorrow and have a generator installed after your home is built.
Yeah.
So we could technically, you know, track the generator plans and then figure out after everything's said and done and when you're into a new budget season, saying, okay, we're gonna plan for this as something to think of and, and we don't have to worry about placement right now. See how everything places out because the generator in the end of the day is, you know, everybody suffers the same. We don't have electric and stuff. Yes, we want one, but I mean, that's an option. I'm thinking, can that, and once the building's built and you just allow, okay, this, this makes sense and we approve it in another day.
Well, I'm all for that option. I'm all for that option, Joe. I, I have no problem waiting. I was trying to come up with an idea of what we could do for now, but I have absolutely no issue waiting and adding it later and saying, you know, and figure out where, where things go. That, cause it's not an, it's not a requirement. It's, it's an option. So I'm all for waiting. So I'm all for waiting.
But do we, we still have to pay, are we still under the hook for the amount that we agreed to not get?
Yeah, we're still going to have to pay a change order to change it to not having one.
Yeah, we will, because it's going to be required on the CO at this point, if it's on the, if it's on the plan. So it'll have to be removed from the plan. And I don't know how much that's going to take to remove it, but, you know...
There's, there's two factors that would be at hand here. Number one, we've already agreed to one lump sum amount with the contractor, which would include this generator. There is the high chance that I could negotiate some future change orders that would be needed to take that money out. So that's an option for us to discuss. But secondly, the removal of something, I don't think is going to be a major expense from the engineer. So we could probably remove that pretty easily and cheaply.
And can we, the other thing is, you know, generators don't go bad, just sitting there. So do we just keep the generator, get the generator, and then just store it at the park until we're ready to install it, somewhere where we pick and go from there? I mean, that's also an option. If we've got the piece of equipment, we can just store it until we're ready to install it. Could be a year, could be less than a year, could be five years, but we have the equipment in today's dollars rather than buying a generator that may be 20% more expensive next year. I don't know, is that a...
No, to me, that's a good thought. That's why we're doing what we're doing in terms of securing a loan and everything else. We're trying to get things at today's dollar. So, I mean, I, you know, I don't know, you know, if we're going to go from 1.8 to 2.1 because of a generator, I'm not sure. I don't know.
No.
Andy, it sounds like you remove it to their garage.
Yeah. I mean, what do you think? I mean, do we just get the generator and hold off on the installation of it for now and put it where we want it when we're ready to put it?
And then just stub it, have them, currently, Christina, I think what Andy's saying is maybe have them stub it out for future installation, but after we move in, but we have it for parking out of, in the shed, waiting to be installed at another time, I think. But we would still have it stubbed out, it's just a matter of, is there room for it where the garbage can containers go, or do we have another location? And then at that point, you're just adding a gas line, the fencing, shrubbery, and wherever we decide to put it that makes sense, not impeding on any of the future proposed areas as far as, you know, a farmer's market and all that. I mean, once we can get a set of eyes on it.
Well, and...
I'm all right with that.
And that, that's fine, but I know the question from the contractor is going to be where we stub it out. Do you want me to leave room there between that and the condensers?
Because we definitely don't want to put it in there.
The purpose is to move the condenser over.
That's right.
So just, the change order should be two things. One is that the condenser's moved over, that's one. And the second one is no installation, we're still going to get the generator, but to be installed at a future...
Okay.
So we want the, so you, on from the electrical side, you want it stubbed out for the, for the auto switch over into the panel and that, and mount that for future connection. And you also would want the gas line to be, have a valve and leave that for future connection. Because we know we're definitely going to do this, so we just want the utility stubbed to be able to be added when we're ready to install it.
Okay.
So the only thing we're really losing is the actual, from the building to the generator, and them actually putting it on a pan.
Gotcha, I'm with you.
Everything else is already paid for. So we aren't going to lose a whole lot on this. So...
But that being said, we will never be able to put the generator where it's proposed now.
Right.
Just make sure we're all on the same page.
Right.
Unless we move the condensers, which we're not going to want to.
Right.
Okay, is everybody in agreement with that?
Sure.
What was the other thing?
The stairs.
The stairs. Okay, so I had a discussion with the brick mason, that he, I just happened to be there when he showed up, just to get an eye on the site where it was. And he brought that the original design had white brick steps. And he's had a lot of experience with this and has relayed the fact that there is a tremendous amount of maintenance upkeep to keep them looking good, and it's almost impossible to do it long-term. And there is a cost in redying them to get them back white again. So his recommendation was not to use white brick on the steps. His recommendation would be to use a natural stone step that would complement the building. From my experience with stone work and hardscape and all that, I would agree with him. The, it's a simple change, it's not going to be, I don't think, much of a cost change. I think it's more of a, just an aesthetic change, which would be something that we could pick just a different step. But I think it would be in our best interest in maintenance and longevity down the road, that's what we're going to save, to change it from that white brick to a natural stone surface that is, you know, that won't be slippery or anything like that, and it would work for our purposes.
Yeah, I'm all for a natural stuff and change. I get the maintenance thing, and I'm totally fine with that.
Yeah, but don't you put, don't you put...
I'm not, I think it's ugly. I think it is ugly. I do not like that.
What are you envisioning for a natural stone surface, Kim? Okay, that's one color. Did you see the picture of the stone that I have at my house that I sent?
No, I didn't see that.
This is, this is all I have in my packet. This is what is going on. I don't like this.
Okay, so you don't like it?
I mean...
The blue stone?
If we're, if we're talking about looking, making this building look like it's been there for a long time and it's old, they didn't use stone, they used brick.
They used stone before they used brick. It's natural surface. I mean, you can use...
Okay. Listen, I don't know what's going on today, but I feel like I'm getting jumped all over when I'm disagreeing about these changes. I'm just merely saying, I don't like stone. I don't want stone, I want brick. If you guys all want stone, then that's fine. But at least let me express my opinion.
I'm not jumping on anybody, Kim. I just made a statement, that's it. I respect your opinion.
So, but is, is it, when they do it, don't they put brick down for, as the foundation to put?
Yes, there will be a, it's the surface of the step that would be a cap. The rest of it would be brick underneath it.
So there is an additional cost?
No, it's just, the difference is, is that they used, what they call is an OG brick. It's a specially designed brick that has the lip that you would have on your step, that they would make, that matches the other brick, but would be your actual surface. So the difference would be going from that brick to a stone piece.
So there's really no cost difference, because it's still, we're still going to be required to have a cap?
Yeah, it's still that, you're replacing that OG brick with a piece of stone for the step, but the base is all brick.
So can we see the pictures that you have? Because I'm in agreement with Kim. I mean, I don't like that, so I think we can agree that there's...
So there's, there's a lot of different, I mean, there's, the sky's the limit for different surfaces, that you can pick different colors, different textures, all that with natural stone. I just happen to have a piece of natural stone at my house that I made my benches out of that I have used for wall caps and steps before, and it just happens to be a different color and a different texture that, you know, but there's, there's a thousand different styles of stone that could be used for it. I'm not saying that blue stone is absolutely, I don't like it either. I, I think it's ugly for what we're trying to accomplish. My, my only thing is, is going from the brick to a surface that's going to be more maintenance friendly and natural stone of some sort, some style called a resort would be a better...
Well, just backing up, the fact that this is coming up as a topic and it's expensive to maintain, what are we talking about, expensive? Like, in other words, is it just normal pressure washing to clean it or whatever?
Well, and it's going to require pressure washing on a much more regular basis. And then what he was telling me is, is that the pressure washing won't get it clean. After some time, you're going to have to go back and dye it. There's, he said, there's a woman that's all she does, is go around and dye white brick back to the white. And it's expensive, and it's perpetual.
And the other issue with pressure washing, it, over time, it deteriorates, you can chip away at the actual brick as well as what's it called, the, in between the brick, the...
The mortar.
Mortar.
Yeah.
It chips away over time. So if we're going to have to be pressure washing to keep it nice and clean, I don't think I'm for it. And I agree with Andy, there are a lot of choices. That was one that was put in our packet. I'm not saying, to your point, but Kim, I like that either, because I agree with you, not that one, but the one I just got a picture of, I'm okay with. But I think Christina sent that picture in, on my text.
You sent the picture? Okay, I was trying to find it. So Christina sent y'all the picture of the stone that I have, that I sent her a picture of. It's just another, just another thing to look at. I mean, it's just another different style, but...
But you're not...
That's, so that's why...
I guess how that, something like that, what do you, I guess the question is, what do we predict that goes well with the white brick or what, whatever we're doing?
So this is why, and that picture actually came from the Stone Center that the mason sent, the Stone Center in Pineville. I don't know if y'all are aware of it, but it's a, it is a great place for resources for natural stone. They carry everything under the sun. I've done business down there for a long time, done, got so many different things, and it's a place to go and look at all their samples and compare and get an idea of what looks good against what we're trying to accomplish. I mean, they might have an onyx that, you know, black onyx stone that would work very well for complementing the black, you know, accents on the building. I'm not saying that I want that blue stone, absolutely not. I'm just saying that the different material is...
I think we're all in agreement that nobody wants the blue stone.
Right. So it's just the material.
But I think we're also in agreement that we're concerned about the cost of maintenance and having to come back and paint. I'm open to looking at, and I was leaving it at this, I'm open to looking at the natural stone, because I agree with this, stone came way before brick did. And natural stone, if we can create something naturally goes well with it, I'm all for it.
Uh, so one thing I want to mention, Jamie had asked about the costs being any different. I can't confirm or deny there's going to be a cost change order with this. Manish said that there shouldn't be a change, but when we talk about different kinds of natural stone, there could potentially be a change. The only one that he provided me that said shouldn't change is the one that's in your agenda packet. So I don't want y'all to go on the assumption that there's not going to be a change order for this, because I don't know that for sure. Secondly, if y'all agree to this, I'm going to need to confirm ADA compliance with the architect, which I'm sure it's fine, but I do need to take that step. And if y'all want to do this, I'm going to need to know the exact stone, because they're going to have to order this. I mean, I can give you a couple of days, but I can't stretch it out any further than a couple of days.
What I can tell you on the cost is, is what the mason relayed to me, is those OG brick are about $12 apiece. So you're looking at somewhere around $36 a square foot in what you're equating. So what you're looking at, when you're looking at natural stone, you're looking at something that's around $36 a square foot. So you can compare apples to apples, the cost. That just gives you an idea of where you're at, and if it becomes more than $36 a square foot, then of course it's going to be cost, it's going to cost more. Not sure what the overall square footage is here. I haven't looked at the detail on that. Talking a dollar, that's, you know, 200, you're talking about 200 dollars. But if you're talking about $5, then it gets to be more. So I don't, I don't know what the square footage is to compare.
But the square footage is going to be the same whether it's brick or stone?
Right, that's, but I don't know what the, what the total square footage is, so we don't know if it's going to be a $10 or $50 if it's a dollar a square foot, kind of comparison is what I'm getting at, so...
Well, I would, I would agree that if we can do something that has less maintenance, I'm all for. And what that solution is, I'm all for, if that helps.
Okay, and that's all I'm trying to do is come up with a...
I don't, I do not want stone, I want brick. I don't care about the maintenance, I appreciate it.
Okay. And where's everyone else at that? Going around the table, Bob?
I, I take the same attitude as Jamie does. I mean, it's something that's less maintenance, but something that looks very nice. And, but at the same time, I'm looking at it, I mean, I'm only listening to yourself. I mean, I like what we already have, so, so what if it's more maintenance? But I didn't realize...
Does it have to be white brick?
That's what's in the plans.
That's, yeah, that's the plan. Can we, do you want to change the color of the brick?
No.
Okay. I mean, and when I, when the mason brought it up, I asked him specifically, what would you recommend in place of the white brick? And he specifically said natural stone. I have no, I have no, I mean, I'm not against any material other than it being this maintenance issue down the road. I don't want the maintenance problems. So I'm not against the white brick and the look, I just want, I don't want the maintenance.
Just be clear, just be clear though, Andy, because I have natural stone in my back. I still have to pressure wash that too.
Right, but, yeah, you, I have to clean anything, but the problem is, is that you can't get the white clean after a period of time, and it has to be redone to get it white again. That's his, that's his contingent, contention of it, and I agree with that, and I have to clean my own stuff.
What is that timeframe?
What's that?
What is the timeframe? Is it a year, is it two years, is it 10 years?
I'm not sure what the timeframe is. He just, he was just very like, this is not good for maintenance. He said it's an expensive maintenance proposition. He was very outward with that. He was surprised that we picked it because of the maintenance. So he doesn't care what he puts on. I mean, he's getting paid the same, no matter what he does, he doesn't care, but he was very concerned about the maintenance. And I, I can only go with his experience on it, you know, what this maintenance is. And he went in telling me about this woman that re-stains the brick, that's all she does, because there is evidently, it's a lot. So that's why I brought this up.
And Christina, you would need us, if we did think over the different natural stone, you would need the selection of that within a short amount of time?
Correct. Because the, Manish is already wanting approvals on everything, and so I know there's a huge lead time on maybe even these bricks.
The, well, the brick, yeah, these bricks, there was a 12-week lead time. I mean, these would be installed at the end of the project, like as late in the project as possible, to keep them as clean as possible. But, and then the other thing is, is that this natural stone, you could walk down there and pick the one you want, they could have it in stock, and it might not even be a lead time on it. Or it could be a very short lead time, we just don't know. And that's why, the sooner the better, because you just don't know what the lead time might be. I mean, if we found a different brick and stayed with brick, that would be less maintenance than the white, I'd be fine with that too. I'm not, I just, I'm worried about the maintenance, is the only thing I'm worried about. So if there's, if there's another brick that we could use that is complimentary, that is less maintenance, I'm good with that.
Hey, Kim? Go ahead, Joe, I'm waiting for Kim to answer.
We'll wait till Kim gets back, but I guess I just struggle with, it's hard to, well, it may be hard to find a natural stone other than something very dark that would go with the building that we are happy on, because I think like a beige one probably is not going to look good.
Right.
But, but isn't there a brick, I mean, when I, when I think, when I think of brick and I think it would, when you're white, if you go to Charleston, you look at all the brick, that's old-style brick that is, it looks weathered, you know, some of the brick that looks weathered. Kim, or is, is, is it, did you just want brick? Or is it that you want white brick? Because I would be, I'm all for, if you want to make it look like it's been there forever, going toward a brick that's like a weathered brick.
I mean, I want, I want a white brick. I don't think you can put a red brick on that or a brown brick. But I think like there are, like, I know that there are bricks out there, and again, it may just be that we picked the wrong brick, but there are bricks out there that you can, like, that are... But there are bricks out there that you can, like, you know, you can make, look white and put something on there to seal it. Like I've watched these home shows, so, I mean, it's called a, I don't remember what it's called. But anyway, I, I don't, I don't want like a red brick on the bottom of the black and white.
No, I'm not saying that, I just thought maybe there's a.
Black brick or something, would that work?
A weathered brick, I, I don't, you know what? I just feel like we're getting buried in the weeds on something that, to me, I understand that guy. I'm going back to Kim's part too, is what, what's, what's maintenance? To him, maintenance is, I don't have to touch it for 10 years.
Yeah.
And then we're getting caught up on something that doesn't need to be touched for 10 years. Shit, put the white brick in there, let's go.
But that's the way I feel as well, the more I'm saying.
And then there's no, no, we're going to go through more change orders going, going through this process.
Yeah.
And I, and I'm not disagreeing with you.
Yeah.
I'm just bringing it to everybody's attention because this is what the guy was very adamant about. And this is what this, all this guy does for a living is, is lay brick. So I, I have to go by his professional experience on this. That he made it sound like it's a lot of maintenance, that it's not just a little bit. As far as sealing it, we discussed that too. And he said that that would make it slick, which would not make it conducive to walking on those steps when it's raining and such. So he did not advise doing that. So I, you know, I don't, I didn't want to make this a, a big issue here. I just wanted to bring this up, that this guy was very adamant about that this is going to be a night, a maintenance nightmare from his experience with this particular product. So I wanted to bring it up.
And these, I think it's going to be more often than once every 10 years because I'm, I'm familiar with the brick as well. The sealing, I don't think should be done, to Andy's point. And it's something that's a surface that is a lot of debris, you're walking on it and stuff. So I think it's going to be more than every 10 years. And I, I, I'm probably more inclined to go with the stone. It's just a matter of can we find, if we have the time to find that stone and pick it out and, you know. But it's, it's up to you guys.
You know, I, I think that.
I'll make the time on Monday morning, I'll make the time on Monday morning to go to, because I've been out to that place picking holders as well as stone. So I'm very familiar with the place out there.
I'm, I'm all for trying to look at some other options. And if the other options work, whether it be stone or a different brick, I don't care. I'd like to look at, at least look at some options and go from there. And if, if we decide that nothing else works but the white brick, then we stay with the white brick. But I would like to at least explore some options that may work in place of it. And I would join you Monday morning, if, Joe, if you want, to look at what they have and see what their, what options are available and what works in our timeline, what doesn't, that kind of thing. Is anybody else open to looking at other options?
Again, do more with you and I, so we'd have to have a staff member. But then I could, we could bring a sit-in form through back to council and get a verbal agreement to say, okay, we're moving forward with this and make a motion like that. If, if that's all, but I will leave some time because I have a 1 o'clock appointment in the afternoon, I think.
I mean, there's no, there's no reason why, you know, these two could go separately or whatever. So that, you know, we all have an opinion on it, I don't know, and it's just whatever.
So is OG the brand? Is it the type?
It's the type.
But the ground thing is that it's a style.
It's, it is, it's, so it's, it's the, OG is like that curved profile that, that builds a step. Okay, so you would, no matter what type of brick you use, it would be an OG. It's just that, that step-creating brick style, it's the shape of it. That's what the OG stands for.
Why does the shape have anything to do with the maintenance of it?
It's not, it's the, it's the material. It's the white material, brick material that it has every bit to do with the maintenance. The, so you could pick a black OG brick and it would be a different maintenance situation. A red OG brick, it would be a different maintenance situation. It's the white material that they use that is the problem.
Yeah.
That's the only problem, is just the white.
But I think it comes down to getting rid of the white because white is going to be, especially in a brick, it's going to be hard to maintain. And it's going to be a regular maintenance either every two years or even more than that possibly, is my guess. Based on what I know about just the stone that I have and how often I have to maintain it, so. But would you guys accept that Andy and I made an appointment to go out, take a look? And then Kim and I come back, 1 o'clock, we have some samples for you. And then we can get them out to that and go and give Christina directions by Monday?
I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
And I'm, and I'm fine with going to meeting, what do you think, Kim?
Kim?
She said whatever.
You okay with that?
Yeah, if you guys want to get a look.
Yeah, okay, so Andy, let's plan first, then Monday morning.
Okay.
8, 8:30, whatever. We'll go together. And then by 1 o'clock, we'll come back with some potential samples, hopefully, or some pictures. And we need to go through what Jamie and to Bob and give Christina directions.
Let's see what, what time they open. They might open at 8, if that works for you, you know, get in.
There are stones out there pretty early.
Yeah.
So we'll just, I'll talk to you later, Andy, about the time, and we'll, we'll go do that, so.
Sounds good.
Mayor, don't forget you have a design meeting at 1 on that same day, so don't miss that.
That's, that's what I'm saying is we'll be, that's why I want to make it real early, get some samples, pictures, and then we'll have it, I'll be back by 1 o'clock.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand, so I can notify the contractor. Andy and Joe will meet, and then do you want your design subcommittee, which consists of Mayor Pro Tim and Mayor, to make the final decision on what is to be decided? Because I'm going to need to know from council standpoint, what your, what your desire is as a whole.
What you just said.
Yeah.
That works, yeah, that absolutely works as far as I'm concerned. I just wanted to throw some other options in there that, in light of this information, that's all. So if.
I'm, I'm good, we'll have that, and I'll make sure Bob gets a picture of it or Jamie as well. Kim, you'll probably see it in person. And if you guys are all okay with it, we'll have the design review board make the final call based on input from all. Does that sound good?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, you good, Christina?
I'm good.
Okay, moving on, because we're really running out of time here. Discuss and consider adoption of ordinance to amend the general operating budget for fiscal year 2021.
So this is pretty straightforward. This is the last opportunity we have to balance the budget. And honestly, I'm still working on some, some numbers that we may have some issues with. I don't foresee the need for a special meeting for a year-end budget amendment, but that could potentially be the case. I don't believe so. The ordinance that you have in your agenda packet has been revised since you all have it in front of you at, at home. Just consists of a couple of different additions for planning and zoning salaries and some miscellaneous parks and recreation moves. So aside from that, this is really just to balance the year-end expected overages.
So this is just the revision, right?
That's the revision.
So don't look at this.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll, we'll make sure that they get a notice of it, it'll be in the minutes.
All right, any questions from council? That said, you need a motion, Christina?
I do, yes.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to adopt the ordinance to amend the general operating budget for fiscal year 2021.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. New number 10, consider appointment of applicant to the planning board for term expiring 31, 2024.
Okay, so you guys have four applicants. You had one come in after the packets went out. And I have email, I emailed you guys that application as soon as I got it, got it handed out here. Your applicants are Buddy Morgan, who first applied in March. You've got Richard Holzberg, who applied during the last round. Buddy's the guy with the stormwater experience. Richard is former planning board member from years ago. You've got Doug Engelbach, I'm not familiar with him. And you've got Will Owens here, who's on the MHD committee.
And Doug and Engelbach still have not gotten in his FBI, FDLE forms, correct?
I have not heard back from him.
Okay, so from, from previous appointments, we've decided that, like, don't even give us these until they're fully packageded, because otherwise you're just going to be running around trying to buy people.
Okay.
So did, was everybody able to, was everybody filled in on the meeting that Christina and Austin had? With a applicant?
Yes.
Yeah, we were given information about it.
I sent everyone the same email.
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Do we want to make, someone want to make a nomination for her?
Sure, I'll nominate Richard Holzberg. Since he's had some previous experience and wants to get back involved. And he's from the other side of town, I like that. Well, I'm going to nominate him.
Any other nominations?
I second the nomination.
Okay. With that, we'll need a motion to approve, Richard Holzberg is a new planning board member?
For a term expiring 31, 2024.
I'm in.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, council. Next up, we have the new number 12, review council minutes from 5:7:21 and 6:8:21. I'll just start, I went and looked at everything, I don't have any changes.
Mr. Mayor, you missed a item that.
Oh, I did, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
The what?
The revised council schedule.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, my apologies. The new number 11 is consider adoption of revised village council meeting schedule. All that is, is changing to the 6 o'clock timeframe?
Yes, and you can't change the one for the 13th because you already have public hearings scheduled for the annexation, the voluntary annexation and the annexation of the park parcel.
Okay. Any other council member have a change other than for July, moving into the 6 o'clock? That said, we need a motion to approve the revised village council meeting schedule?
I'm in.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have review of council minutes from 5:27:21, we're scheduled in 6:8:21 regular meetings. I have no changes?
I have no changes.
I have no changes.
No changes.
Nope.
So that's okay if y'all.
That said, I need a motion to move that to the consent agenda for July meeting?
You actually don't need a motion for that, you just have to tell me to put it on there.
All right, then put it on the agenda, consent agenda for the July regular meeting.
Okay.
Next up, we have number 13, the discussion of 2022 Marvin Days celebration.
And I have a slight, I have a small update from Derek. Let me make sure, let me see if he's still here.
I think he left.
Yeah, he left.
Okay. He gave me this little brief update. Derek has reached out to the elementary school and has gotten initial approval for the use of their facilities at no charge for a health fair slash blood drive, 5K type of festivities. The principal at Marvin Elementary is blocking off Friday evening through Sunday morning for us. Only issue would be if the county restricts the indoor use of facilities at that time in 2022. That's really all I have, that's really all we have for that. The PRG has not met since the last council meeting, so turn it over to you guys to discuss.
I'm good, I'm actually working on scheduling a second one by store next week to talk to the manager about how we can utilize their facilities. So I'll keep you updated.
Okay, any other comments? All right, we, we don't need a motion for anything on that, right?
Nope.
Okay, moving on to the new 14 is consider adoption of, do you want to read that again, Jamie? I think you have that.
I can read it, I can read it too.
Yes, item number 16, consider adoption of revised general fund budget ordinances, OR 2020-10-03, OR 2020-10-04, OR 2020-11-02, OR 2020-11-03, OR 2020-12-01, OR 2021-01-01, OR 2021-03-01, and OR 2021-03-03.
Okay, thank you. Who has that?
I do. So, so basically, in the double checking of all the year-end expenditures and budget, we identified a couple of ordinances as just mentioned that needed some revisions based off of inaccurate information given to you all at the time of adoption. Most of this was basically the to and from amounts. Basically, the amendments that are presented today were the same exact amendment totals that were presented months ago. The only differences that you see here are the from and to. They're slightly different. And I put in the original amount and I crossed through so y'all can see what the changes were. The biggest one, most of them are very minor in nature. The biggest one being the fund balance appropriation for the truck purchase. In your original ordinance, it said you were moving a fund balance appropriation from $626,000 from unassigned to $596. That was incorrect. In the audit statement that we have, that actually should have been put in your packets here, but I see that it's not, the audited amounts were actually the 1.095 million. So, I'm sorry, basically $1 million of unassigned. Just want to make sure you knew that your unassigned fund balance was not that low. Aside from that, that is pretty much it. Oh, I see what you did, I'm sorry, you did it right, it was just in the wrong spot.
Oh, my bad.
Yeah, it's in your agenda packet, I'm sorry, it is in there, it's just in the wrong spot. Just flip the couple pages and you'll see the actual audit statement where it shows that 1.095 number.
I don't know if I have, do we have that in our packet?
No, I'm sorry, y'all don't have it at home. There's no changes made to the, to the overall amendments that were made, I just want to make sure that's known.
Okay. Anything else on that subject?
No.
Comments? All right, moving on.
Hold on, hold on, hey, Joe? Joe, you need, there needs to be, there needs to be a motion to adopt these ordinances as amended?
Oh, I'm sorry, my apologies. So.
I'm going to check through what Jamie said.
So a motion to.
Further discussion? So you got that, Austin?
I'm good.
Okay, so she made the motion for all of what the ordinances are, okay? So we're asking for approval, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you. Next up, communications, discussion of July 2021 communications.
Do you, do you have any open topics, that was before that?
Oh, I'm sorry, open topics, anyone? All right, we'll close the open topics hearing from no one on that. Next up is communications, discussion of July 2021 communications.
Okay, guys, I've got the draft list in here. Christina gave me a note saying we want to have a running list of ton capsule ideas. I haven't received any from the public. Uh, I, we, we haven't, have we came up?
Yes, we've come up with some stuff.
Okay, I will compile that at a later date. But we haven't received, I haven't received any from the public and I have been posting that. On here, do you guys have any additional topics to add, want to take any topics off? I've got draft newsletters already ready to go, need to know what changes I need to make. I've got draft newsletters already ready to go. Need to know what changes I need to make.
I think we need to let the community know about trash.
Trash. There's one other one I thought of, actually, just last night, is the municipal filing period begins July 2nd to run for office, and it closes July 16th. Would you like me to add that to the list? And that new candidate...
I thought I already saw it. I thought I already saw you send it out.
I did. I sent it out already, because I got it from the Board of Elections. I can send it out again, though, in the newsletter, and the candidate questionnaire should be going live relatively soon. I need to check back in with Jared. They were fixing one little problem with it, programming-wise. So candidate questionnaire and election information, yes, no?
Nope.
So just to be clear, the candidate questionnaire, we're gonna have a window of time, and that's gonna be, do we have, we've decided that window of time to get there? Because obviously, they have to sign up by July whatever on the Board of Elections, and then we're gonna give a timeframe of when they can respond to the questionnaire. Two weeks?
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Two weeks after the filing date.
Awesome, okay.
Basically, the end of the...
I have no problem, I have no problem you bringing that back and reminding the community, if you want to run, hey, you know, there's the opportunity to make your voice heard and be a part of the solution rather than complain. And, you know, I mean, I think that's good information to put out there.
Last thing I'll ask is, you said you want information about the trash. Was there anything specific you guys are looking for for that?
That it's happening.
I'll do it.
Get it from Christina.
I know we'll need to do an FAQ down the road, but...
We'll, I will get some.
You may start getting a lot of phone calls, but I think it's necessary that we, we're giving people plenty of heads up.
Well, especially if their tax bills are going out September 1st. We don't have that much time to tell them that, hey, you're gonna be this on your tax bill if you get it. This is what we're doing.
Right. And, you know, been some highlight points, possibly, you know, saving money annually for them, as well as more of a complete service. And, you know, some of the reasoning that, you know, eliminating the amount of trucks that travel our local roads at different companies at different days. Simple things, just, you know, basically why we're moving forward with this. Anything else from any other council?
No.
All right, moving forward, reports and updates.
I don't have...
I have planners report.
I don't have anything to report, Mr. Mayor. I've just been busy doing financial stuff in Village Hall and Solid Waste, so...
You're not, is he on yet? All right, thank you. Planners report, we don't have anything for that, correct?
No, sir. Other than the fact that we have hired a new planner that will start on July 6th. There will be a press release sent out tomorrow in the newsletter.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to agenda lines review, action items, ongoing action item list, Austin?
Okay, Tom and the new planner will work on the zoning district changes for the Marvin Heritage District. The ones that Tom went over earlier. They will work on conditional zoning. Christina will move forward with traffic radars. We'll move forward with the well vendor, D.L. Mullis. Was there direction on the solid waste? I wasn't in the room at the time.
Yes, the ordinance was approved, and so we will proceed with putting that on the tax bill.
Okay. And I will move forward with the planning board applicant. Make sure I haven't missed anything here. Minutes on the, minutes will be on the regular meeting on the consent agenda. You guys will get revised calendar, calendar invites for the meetings being moved to 6:00 PM. Calendar invite. And and was there, do you have, you have direction on Village, on Village Hall change orders?
Yes.
So we're waiting. What was the direction on the generator?
That we're going to stub it out and move the condensers over, but we're not placing it yet.
Just gonna store the generator itself, so we're ready to put it in.
And then you guys look into alternatives for the bricks, so. Okay. That's all I've got. I don't know if Christina has anything else?
Just, they, just the district will get, will work on the options for the conditional.
Okay, yeah, I got that already. That's all I got.
Okay, so the ongoing action item list. Do we know where we are with the easement with Ennis Brook?
Um...
Ennis Brook easement.
We're still working on that. From my understanding, the attorney has got the agreement set up, and Rohit was working with the property owner, but has not been, the property owner hasn't been responsive for whatever reason. I'm not sure.
Joe, you want to reach out to Tommy to find out what's going on?
So is the following Tommy's quarter one here?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, I'll reach out to him.
Oh, hi.
Anything else from anybody else? That said, we'll move on to comments. Kim? Hope you feel better. Bob?
No comments, thank you.
Andy?
No.
Jamie?
Real quick, Tom made a, Tom made a statement today while he was here about the Form-based code and all the stuff. The significance of the work that's been put into this Form-based code. Rohit has done a just stellar job of getting that done, and I think he needs to be recognized for that. I know he's put a lot of time, his staff's put a lot of time into that. Tom reiterated it today, that he's really got it to a point where it is, we're in a good place with that. So kudos to staff and certainly Rohit on that. Village Hall, for those who haven't gone by, we, I mean, it's slow coming, but we're making progress, and I'm happy to see that. School's out, so, God, people that are flying up and down Newtown Road, Marvin Road, and all the arteries and main roads through Marvin, God, please just slow down a little bit. Kim, I hope you feel better. Being sick and not feeling good in the summer, it sucks, and I hope you're feeling better. Staff, thanks again for all you do. I mean, again, I still, I say it until I'm blue in the face. We're understaffed, and to get to all the progress that we've done, being understaffed, thank you. Done.
Great. Another thing I'll say is thank you, staff, and Ken, for all your hard work, and for the council members and Mayor Protem for holding down the town park while I'm away, so. That said, we're gonna, I don't need a motion to move into closed session.
Pursuant to NCGS, yep.
NCGS 143 des 318. Dot 11A1 for review and approval of closed village council session minutes. Two 1921, three 1021, five 1121, five 2721, and six 821 council meetings.
Samu?
Samu.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, we're back in open session?
Yeah, he is right now.
Is there a motion?
Yes, Samu.
I make a motion to table all the minutes until the July 13th meeting.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, and then I'll need a motion to adjourn.
At 11:47.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Andy, give me a call. We can discuss the time on Monday.